The mission and the invocation today will be by Wayne Fennell, Westwood Baptist Church, Pastoral Care. Mr. Fennell.
If you will bow your heads, Father God with praise and thanksgiving, we come before you, for you are a good God and you have lovingly blessed us. And Lord, this nation has had a history of thanksgiving and this is the thanksgiving season. So we come before you with grateful hearts. We thank you that we have your blessing of prosperity upon this land. We thank you for the godly men and women gathered here that you have placed into office. Lord, we pray for your wisdom upon them. May they feel your love and your presence. May you give them discernment that they may pass the laws and the rules and regulation and budgets, all according to your sovereign will for the welfare of this community. So Lord, we thank you for each one of them and your blessings upon them in this season of thanksgiving. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. We will now have the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited, just as for all.
We'll now have the roll call, please.
Mason.
Here.
Ledford.
Here.
Rogers.
Here.
Winters.
Here.
Beatty.
Here.
Hughes.
Here.
Alford.
Here.
Cry.
Here.
Blake.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Gilbert.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Goins. Slater. It's thirteen present and one absent.
I'd like to have a motion for the approval of the minutes from the last meeting. Commissioner Thompson made the motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Mason made the second. Call the roll, please.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor and none opposed and one absent.
The next item will be the report from the county mayor. Mayor Davis, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon, everyone. I don't have anything to report today, but this is the day that we recognize and give certificates and twenty-year pins to our employees that have dedicated twenty years of service to Bradley County. So I'd like to call on them one at a time to come up and get their certificate and their pin, and then we'll have a quick photo, and that's all I have to report unless someone has something for me.
Anyone have anything for the mayor?
Okay. Melissa Collins. Come on up, Melissa. Step back here and we'll take a group picture in just a minute, okay? There's your certificate and twenty-year pin. Appreciate you. Vicki Patterson. Tim Mason. Oh, you're up here, Tim. Tim Myers. Kevin White. Roy Spence. Always been along twenty years, Troy. David Harper. Berlin Williams. Mitchell Rowe. Arnold Tarpley. Arnold's not here. Adam, if you'd get a photo. I just want to say we appreciate each and every one of you. We usually give thirty-year pins. I don't think anybody, hopefully we didn't make a mistake, made it to the thirty-year this year, but we had ten people with twenty-year pins, assuming we got everybody, and I hope we did. If not, we'll get them at a later date. But we appreciate your all's commitment to Bradley County, the twenty years of service that you've given us, and we just want to say thank you. And so if the commission would, give them applause and we'll get a picture, man. Congratulations. Congratulations. Again, thank you, and hopefully you'll be back in a few years and get your thirty-year pin. But thank you, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mayor. The next item we'll go into will be the reports from the committees and our districts. We'll start to our right. Commissioner Beatty.
Everything looks pretty good for our district.
Consent agenda.
Oh, consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, Commissioner Thompson? Do I have a second? Commissioner Slater, call the roll, please.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor, none opposed, and one absent.
Thank you. Now we'll go to the reports from committees and our districts. Commissioner Beatty.
Everything looks pretty good in the first district.
Commissioner Hughes.
Mr. Chairman, we discussed last week establishing an ad hoc committee to consider the SEPC system cost sharing program proposed by the mayor. I move to create the ad hoc committee to review the proposal and to recommend to the commission the best ways to proceed. I put that in form of question.
Do I have a second?
Motion. Put that in form of motion, sir.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Winters is the second. Call the roll, please.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor, none opposed, and one absent.
Thank you. Anything else, sir?
Mr. Chairman, I'd also had some complaints about the landfill. I'm suspecting it's the weather that's causing some of the issues, but as I said, I was asked to report on it, so I'm reporting. I have no more.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Alford.
Yes, the second district's doing well. I just wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Great. Commissioner.
Turkeys are expensive this year, but if you go to the right store, you can get them cheaper.
Got a shop just like eggs, isn't it? Commissioner Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This past weekend, we picked up some more tires. I'd like to thank Coach Ben Smith and the boys and girls wrestling team for their helping getting these tires picked up. They picked up 1,246 tires. They did it within about an hour. They got together, organized, got it done. And talking with the coaches, their season, I believe, starts next week, so we wish them well in their upcoming season. The next pickup is scheduled for December the third, and this time it'll be the ROTC programs from both Cleveland High and Bradley Central helping us pick up even more tires. We hope to have everything cleaned up by March of 2023. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Happy for Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thank you. Commissioner Collins.
District three is doing great. Just echo the comments of Commissioner Alford and Commissioner Blake. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Thank you. Commissioner Winters.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a lot to be thankful for in this community, and today my grandkids are at Beta Club convention. They're participating. I have two that participated in the elementary. I have one that's participating in the junior. Beta Club's been very strong here in Bradley County. It's an opportunity for young people to compete on a statewide basis and also a nationwide basis, and my kids are taking great advantage of it. But thanks to the sponsors, the people that are in our school system that sponsor these types of events for our kids, that's why Bradley County Schools, in my opinion, is the best district, right beside City, which is my district. But it's very strong, and we're very proud of what's going on there. Commissioner Collins and I were just, we've spent a lot of years, he's still spending years, in the Bradley County school system, but we have one to be really proud of. If you go, as I have, to other districts, and I've been to several counties and large districts and seeing their schools, we have schools to be proud of, and we should be proud of them and be thankful that we live in a community like this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Gilbert.
I'd just like to be thankful for these fifteen commissioners I sit up here with and Mayor Davis and the secretary and all y'all girls. It's so nice to be up here and to see such nice faces. And I've had quite a few phone calls on the SEPC systems, and a couple peoples brought me some stuff where they've already had theirs done just recently, just for information. And I'm looking forward to getting to some of this right here. I don't want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and it all seems good in the fourth district.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Thompson.
I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, too. Hope you eat a lot of turkey. We had a land and building committee meeting this morning and talked about a sprinkler system in the Archives building on Church Street. We have, we discussed a lot of things, and we're, we've come to a conclusion that we need to have another meeting, and which will be announced, and at that meeting, we'd like to have a representative from the Fire Department, EMS, and Archives, and anybody involved in Archives or building, and also the building and land committee. And that will be announced at a later date. And whether days here we're going to have off and things, well, we'll just have to, we'll set up another meeting fairly quick. And like I say, I want to wish everybody a Thanksgiving. I want to recognize Mr. Mason out here. He and I were commissioners together. I appreciate him very much, and we had a lot of good times together, didn't we? I appreciate you being here, and he's, he's almost as old as I am. So anyway, we're good friends. I appreciate him. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Slater.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tomorrow is our time to defend our title and this impressive and coveted trophy with the United Way Bagging Event. If you plan to join us, be at the Food City on Ocoee Crossing at 12:45 tomorrow. Our competition is the city government, city council and government, and so we want to try to retain our trophy. I think I have it backwards. And if you're unable to be there tomorrow, I'll happily take your money today. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. This will be great. Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Chairman. Everything's doing well in the sixth district. I would also like to thank my mom and dad and my wife for being here today and always supporting me. I think my dad, a lot of y'all know him, he did serve twenty-five-plus years for this county, and that's a lot. And I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving in the sixth district and Bradley County. And also with the men and women that I stood up here earlier with, with the sheriff's office, a lot of you don't realize this, but we all have served shoulder to shoulder for five different sheriffs, so that's a lot, too, and time's still, it's rolling on for all of us. That's all I have, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Ledford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Have a couple things. First of all, I do want to thank Mr. Mason and Barbara for being here today. I'm in the Rutaan Club with them, with Tim. Just great people. I've started out many years ago with a Rutaan. It's a great little organization we have down there, like a little family. Number two, we went to the tree lighting ceremonies Saturday night here. It was really good, besides listening to Kevin Brooks and the mayor kind of fighting over who was going to light the tree, and then Santa Claus come down and finally lit the tree. Third, I went to the jail this morning and toured the jail. Sheriff, I just have to say, this jail, with all the conversation you hear, people saying how, oh, it's a jail, you know, it's nasty, and this, that, and another. I work in a hospital, and it's clean, and that jail is just about as clean as the hospital. With your understaffed, I know you have understaffed people, but I want to give a great thanks to Ms. Kristy Walls. I know we mentioned earlier, but I was just kidding. I don't want you to pin that one on me, but she was great, and it's great to have someone with the knowledge like Ms. Walls has, and the staff was great, the guy that kind of walked with us, you know, we went to different pods and some of the inmates, which some people would say that was a little scary, but it didn't scare me. So, but anyway, that was a great visit. One other thing, I have a constituent that watches online, and several, I'm sure, watch online, and this constituent is not happy with me right now at the time. So I want to say this to anyone watching online. Anytime you have an issue with the sixth district, you need something. I don't care what it is. If your ditches need to be mowed out, I know exactly who to go to for different things like that. Your bridge embankments, the rock has sloughed off and the culverts are eroding, you call me and I guarantee you, we will get that issue looked at. I'm not saying we can solve every single issue. We cannot. But as far as saying that I'm not concerned about issues in the sixth district, every single issue, every single person in the sixth district is my concern. And I'm going to take everything you say to heart, and we're going to work on it. I'm not going to throw nobody under the rug and brush you to the side and say, well, there's nothing we can do about it. That's not the way I work. And thank you all, and I hope everyone has a very good Thanksgiving, and of course, I don't eat turkey, we eat ham. But anyway, thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Before we go to Commissioner Rogers, I'll back up here to Commissioner Winters.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I failed to mention the legal legislative committee is planning to have a meeting, but we would like to have each of you to submit, I think Commissioner Blake has submitted his, any area you would like for us to look at as a committee, legal, legislative. Laurie, get that to Laurie. Laurie will get that to me. We'll get it to the committee to review and bring it back to this body to review whatever our views are of the legal legislative challenge that you consider. I should mention Ralph Mason and myself. Ralph and I served together on the Bradley County School Board. We were just reminiscing how we could do so much more with $250,000 than we can do today with $250,000. But he was chairman of Bradley County School Board, did a great job there, and then came up here. I wondered why he came up here, and I ended up doing that. So we're glad to see you, and I know you're proud of your son. We appreciate him as well. Thank you for you and your wife and daughter-in-law being here. You're a great family. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Rogers, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the spirit of Thanksgiving, I want to say a few words. This past Saturday was National Adoption Day, which was a very big day in the Rogers household. Many don't know this, some in this room might, that my mom and my dad adopted me thirty-one years ago from the state of Tennessee. Adopted my brother eight and a half years later, and this year in 2022, I got to adopt my two daughters, Ivy and Violet. They're eight and six. And so this past weekend was a big day for our family, and it reminded us really what to be thankful for in life, and that is for our family and our friends and our loved ones, and there's so much more. And so with that, my wife as well is forty, almost forty weeks pregnant, thirty-nine weeks pregnant right now, and so we're getting ready to have a new little girl here in a few weeks, here in the next couple weeks, really any time now. But I just wanted to mention that in the spirit of Thanksgiving, the thing that I'm thankful for is, I know we all are thankful for Bradley County and thankful to live in a great state and a great city and a free country, but our families are probably one of the most things that we are thankful for. And with this weekend being National Adoption Day, I'm thankful for a mom and dad who chose and loved me and thankful that I got to choose and love my daughters as well. So with that, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Very touching. Next, we'll go to the approval of the agenda. I'd like to make, looking for a motion. Commissioner Winters, second. Mr. Thompson, call the roll, please.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor, none opposed, and one absent.
Thank you very much. Agenda item A, motion to cancel some meetings. Commissioner Alford.
Yes, with the holidays coming up for everyone, and some people take a lot of vacation time during this time of year, I'd like to make a motion that we cancel the November 28-22 work session, the December 27-22 work session, and the January 3-23 voting session. Put that in form of a motion, sir.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Thompson on the second. Call the roll, please.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor, none opposed, and one absent.
Item B, motion to approve the sheriff's grant plan. Commissioner Alford.
Yes, if you remember last week's meeting, the sheriff was here and talked about the getting a grant facilitator using some of his salaried type money. I make a motion to approve the sheriff's plan to use the money from 101-542-10-106 to employ a grant facilitator. And also, if you have in front of you a copy of the letter from the sheriff explaining what would happen if and when, or if it ever fill that, fill the corrections officer's position, what would happen. Put that in the form of a motion.
Some Commissioner Winters on the second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor, none opposed, and one absent.
Thank you very much. Next item is C. We'll now go into a public hearing. It's a resolution to rezone from 1-1 General Industrial District to Farming Agricultural Residential. I'll let Commissioner Hughes pick it up here.
Mr. Chairman, this is a resolution to rezone from I-1 General Industrial District to FAR Farming Agricultural Residential District property located at Ledmine Valley Road Southwest and identified by tax map 065 parcel 057.1 and .2 and .3. Those can be seen on pages 31 and 32. I put that in the form of a motion.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Thompson on the second. Is there anyone here to speak for or against? This is your opportunity. Call the roll, please.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Winters.
Yes.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Slater. It's thirteen in favor, none opposed, and one absent.
Okay. Item D, public hearing. We're now in a public hearing. It's another rezoning. I'll turn it over to Commissioner Hughes.
Mr. Chairman, this is a resolution to rezone from R-2 High Density Residential District to C-2 General Commercial District property located at 8130 Francisco Road Northwest, identified by tax map 012B, Group A parcel 004. This can be seen on pages 33 and 34. I put that in form of a motion.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Mason on the second. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak for or against the resolution? Please, please come up. Got the mic, sir. Just identify yourself, please.
Good afternoon. My name's Garrett Holland. I'm the owner of the property. I don't have much to say. The committee already, I think, has given its approval, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to hear any questions about it.
Is anyone, Commissioner Winters?
What are you going to put on that site?
On that 8130 site, there's a six-bay garage there.
Yeah.
We have an antique auto restoration company who is planning to move in, so it's not going to have a lot of traffic, kind of very specialized type.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else have any questions for the gentleman? Thank you very much, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
On his behalf, they have, I'm assuming you own quite a bit of property down through there because there's a barn and several other items that they're already started making some tremendous upgrades in that area with. So it's amazing what changes they've done already there.
Great. Any other discussion on it? Call the roll, please.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Slater. It's thirteen in favor, none opposed, and one absent.
Item number E, we again are in a public hearing. Resolution to rezone from Farming FAR Forestry Agricultural to General Commercial. Commissioner Hughes.
Mr. Chairman, this is a resolution to rezone from FAR Forestry Agricultural Residential District to C-2 General Commercial District property located at 8150 Georgetown Road Northwest and identified by tax map 012B, Group A parcel 007. These can be seen on pages 35 and 36. I put this in the form of a motion. Mr. Chairman, if you'll notice the address, it's associated with the address above.
Commissioner Rogers, seconded the motion. Anyone here to speak for or against? Please, sir.
Again, I don't have anything formal to say, other than happy to take any questions. This property adjoins the previous property, and we've been making some improvements. It's right there along Highway 60, Georgetown Road. I think commercial's of appropriate use for that. So that's the old feed store right there is, you get to the end of Udoa Georgetown Road along Highway 60.
Mr. Gilbert.
What are you going to be putting there?
We'll probably do some type of light retail or even office space. Love to get a real estate office or an insurance office, or we've even looked at, we've had the barbers and that type of thing calling in, so we're not sure. But some kind of light retail probably or office.
Anyone else have any questions, comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here outside of the property owner that'd like to speak? Call the roll, please.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Slater. It's thirteen in favor, none opposed, and one absent.
Thank you. Prior to going to the communication from the audience, I'd like to address the SEPC system cost sharing ad hoc committee that we just passed, and I'd like to place the following names on that committee. The chairperson would be Howard Thompson, Commissioner Blake, Commissioner Gilbert, Commissioner Hughes, and Commissioner Mason. And the reason, one reason we need to expedite this thing, these people are suffering out here, some of them are. And that next item is communication from the audience. Anyone like to address the county commission? Commissioner Alford.
Yes, Chairman, I forgot to mention the sheriff's letter on that resolution. I'd like to place that in the minutes, please, that letter.
So done.
Replace in the minutes. Do we need to vote on that, Chris? No? Okay.
So, no one here to speak? Okay, the next announcement, celebrity begging competition tomorrow, Food City, Ocoee Crossing. County offices are closed.